I'm sorry. Ready? That means good. Okay. We're ready. Good morning, everyone. Welcome to our September meeting. The summer was very fast, but here we are in the fall wishing a great school year for everyone ahead of us. I'd like to call this meeting to order. The New Jersey Open Public Meetings Act was enacted to ensure the right of the public to have advance notice of and to attend the meeting of public bodies at which any business affecting their interest is discussed or acted upon. In accordance with the provisions of this act, the State Board of Education has caused notice of this meeting to be published by having the date, time, and place thereof posted in the Department of Education, Secretary of State's office, and notice has been given to the State House Press Corps, the Governor's office, and the State Board Agenda subscribers. And as a quorum is present, this meeting will now come to order. May I please have a motion? Thank you very much, Board Member Berry. May I please have a second? Thank you very much, Board Member Bennett. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Thank you. And I'd like to adjourn to executive session. Whereas, in order to protect the personal privacy and to avoid situations wherein the public interest might be dis served, the Open Public Meetings Act permits public bodies to exclude the public from that portion of the meeting at which certain matters are discussed. Now, therefore be it resolved that consistent with the provision of NJSA 10 colon 4 dash 12b, the State Board of Education will now adjourn to executive session to discuss personnel and legal matters. May I please have a motion?
A motion.
Thank you, Board Member Shahada. May I please have a second? He is in. May I please have a second? Thank you very much, Board Member Berry. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, please say nay. We are now going into executive session. Thank you very much. We hope to be back at 10 a.m. Thank you.
Hi. Good morning, everyone. Welcome to our Fall Semester for Students, God Bless. We're happy to have everyone with us and those online, welcome. Thank you for joining in. I'd like to reconvene, please, to resume the public session of our meeting. Whereas consistent with the provision of NJASA 10:4-12B, the State Board will now adjourn from executive session to resume the open session of this meeting. May I please have a motion? Thank you very much, Dr. Butcher. May I please have a second? Thank you very much, Board Member Pena. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Perfect. I believe it's unanimous. Any opposed? Any abstentions? Motion carries. So, I'd like to begin our meeting today, please, with the Pledge of Allegiance. And our newest board member, may I please introduce everyone to Ahmed Shahada. And he's going to lead us with the Pledge of Allegiance.
Pledge of Allegiance to the flag of the United States of America. Considered republic for which it stands one nation on
Thank you. So, as our State Board of Education meetings are accessible to our public for viewing on the YouTube channel, I would ask and like to advise you that it is available in multi-language and translation options within closed captioning. If you are viewing the simulcast presently, you can use the settings option in YouTube for information about subtitles and closed captioning in multiple languages. Again, I would like to welcome Ahmed Shahada today, who joins us for his first time in the new role of State Board of Education member. Ahmed resides in Union County and is an Assistant Superintendent of Business in Clifton Public Schools. His term will expire in 2029. Ahmed brings a great deal of knowledge and experience to our board, and I very much look forward to your future contributions. And if we can continue, please, with the approval of the minutes, I would like to have a motion to accept the August 7, 2024 minutes, please. Thank you very much, Board Member Berry. May I please have a second? Thank you very much, Board Member Bennett. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Please say nay. Any abstentions? Perfect. Thank you. And, Dr. Butcher, you'd like to abstain? Thank you. And Board Member Pena, you'd like to abstain?
Yes. Yes, thank you.
So, the board has scheduled for today open public testimony. And the opportunity for today, meaning that registered members of the public may offer public testimony on any educational topic of choice. State Board members Dr. Ronald Butcher, Dr. Ned Johnson, Mr. Ahmed Shahada, and Board Member Jeanette Pena are scheduled to hear testimony this afternoon. For the month of October, the State Board of Education will not receive public testimony as there are no topics on the schedule. State Board members Claudine Kenyon, Dr. Joseph Rickel, Arsilio were scheduled to hear, and myself, to hear testimony in October, but there is nothing scheduled. As far as our president's report, I'm delighted to introduce our wonderful student. She is Anna Paskowitz, and she's a senior at Palmyra High School, and, which is in Burlington County. Her advisors, Ms. Kelly Jones and Ms. Kim Martino, are they here? Would you like to stand up, please? Thank you. And welcome, Anna. I would like very much to have you share with all of us your comments. And if you come here, there's the microphone ready for you. Thank you very much.
Thank you, President Goldenberg, and good morning, everyone. Today, I want to shine a light on the 2024 NJASC state charity, as well as how fundraising for NJASC's annual charity incorporates the involvement of students across the state. Every year, the NJASC state officers select a charity, typically one from New Jersey, for which member schools from around the state are asked to fundraise during the school year. The selection process begins with open applications from charities that submit information to the NJASC executive member of charities. From the pool of applicants and information provided, the executive member selects three or four charities to give presentations at the NJASC State Officer Meeting in April. After the presentations, the NJASC officers vote on which one is the best choice for the mission of NJASC, as well as the best fit for the students of New Jersey. This is a huge deal. Member schools around the state will raise funds in support of the charity and donate all proceeds to these efforts. At the NJASC Spring Conference at Six Flags Great Adventure in May, the previous year's charity receives a commemorative check, and the total funds raised from that year is announced. In addition to this, the charity for the following year is announced, and representatives from the charity introduce themselves. This past May, NJASC was proud to present the Hugs for Brady Foundation with a check for $76,000, all raised by students across New Jersey. Hugs for Brady's ultimate goal is to end pediatric cancer. The money donated to the foundation goes toward research, blood drives, families, and bringing joy to young cancer patients. In addition to announcing this large fundraising success, the NJASC also announced the 2024-2025 state charity, Ava's Voice. Ava Bullis, a 2024 graduate from Shore Regional High School in New Jersey, is the inspiration behind this charity, which is run in part by Ava and her family. When Ava was little, she was diagnosed with Usher syndrome, a rare genetic disease that causes hearing, sight, and sometimes balance to be impaired and potentially disappear later in life. There are approximately 400,000 cases of Usher syndrome worldwide. However, it often goes undiagnosed. Ava's mom knew that there was no cure for Usher syndrome, but she made it her goal for Ava to have as many opportunities as possible before she lost her sight and hearing permanently. She also wanted Ava's voice to be heard, and that's how Ava's voice was created. Since its founding in 2015, the charity has provided an outlet for communication between children's and families impacted by this syndrome. It has also spread awareness to people that otherwise would have never known about Usher syndrome. They are a partner in the Usher Syndrome Coalition and affiliate of the National Family Association for Deaf Blind. Because of Ava's roots in New Jersey, she organized and facilitated multiple summer camps for children with Usher syndrome here in New Jersey. These camps provide kids with opportunities not only to seek support through one another, but also experience and see amazing things before they are no longer able to. Thanks to the charity's national and international connections, they were able to take their camps abroad and connect New Jersey with children across the globe. For example, Ava, along with other children with Usher syndrome, were able to see the sunrise at the Grand Canyon. Recently, Ava's Voice partnered with Usher Kids UK and Usher Kids Australia to host summer camps for children with Usher syndrome. The goal is to create memories for the participants, even if their vision, hearing, and balance deteriorates. All funds raised by NJ schools through the NJASC in 2024-2025 will only be used in New Jersey camps. That way, schools who raise money for the state charity know they are having a direct impact on kids in schools across the state. Schools across the state raise money for the state charity in numerous ways. There are the typical fundraisers, bake sales, car washes, et cetera. However, schools come up with their own unique ways to raise money for the designated charities as well. Many schools have a spoof on a beauty pageant. For example, Neptune High School in Monmouth County hosts a Mr. Neptune pageant, which raises money through a $5 participation fee and $1 judges bribes, where the audience can bribe judges for whom to crown the winner. Many of these pageants also raise money through audience tickets and food sales and can raise significant amounts of money for the state charity. It's one great way to involve school spirit with raising money for a great cause. Since 2010, NJASC has raised hundreds of thousands of dollars to support numerous nonprofit charities whose efforts support children and families in the Garden State. NJASC's past fundraising recipients have included the Hero Campaign, which seeks to prevent drunk driving injuries and deaths by promoting designated driving; Good Grief, which seeks to build resilience and provide support for children and families struggling with loss; Hope Loves Company, which seeks to provide support, resources, and community for children with ALS or who have a family member with ALS; and One Simple Wish, which seeks to support happiness and hope in the lives of children who have been impacted by family crisis and foster care; and Christine's Hope, which seeks to help create a new generation of leaders by teaching kids how to help other kids. NJASC incentivizes and rewards schools' support of the annual state charity by recognizing their funding efforts at its spring conference. At the conference, NJASC awards member schools who have donated the amounts $1,000, $2,000, $5,000, and $10,000 with a plaque. It's a way to motivate students to reach a goal.
Ahmed Shahada, and he's going to lead us with the Pledge of Allegiance.
Pledge of Allegiance to the flag of the United States of America. Considered republic for which it stands.
It stands one nation.
So, as our State Board of Education meetings are accessible to our public for viewing on the YouTube channel, I would ask and like to advise you that it is available in multi languages and translation options within closed captioning. If you are viewing the simulcast presently, you can use the settings option in YouTube for information about subtitles and closed captioning in multiple languages. Again, I would like to welcome Ahmed Shahada today, who joins us for his first time in the new role of State Board of Education member. Ahmed resides in Union County and is an Assistant Superintendent of Business in Clifton Public Schools. His term will expire in 2029. Ahmed brings a great deal of knowledge and experience to our board, and I very much look forward to your future contributions. And if we can continue, please, with the approval of the minutes, I would like to have a motion to accept the August 7, 2024 minutes, please. Thank you very much, Board Member Berry. May I please have a second? Thank you very much, Board Member Bennett. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, please say nay. Any abstentions? Perfect, thank you. And Dr. Butcher, you'd like to abstain? Thank you. And Board Member Peña, you'd like to abstain?
Yes.
Yes, thank you. So, the Board has scheduled for today open public testimony, and the opportunity for today, meaning that registered members of the public may offer public testimony on any educational topic of choice. State Board members Dr. Ronald Butcher, Dr. Ned Johnson, Mr. Ahmed Shahada, and Board Member Jeanette Peña are scheduled to hear testimony this afternoon. For the month of October, the State Board of Education will not receive public testimony as there are no topics on the schedule. State Board members Claudine Keenan, Dr. Joseph Rickel, Arsilio were scheduled to hear, and myself, to hear testimony in October, but there is nothing scheduled. As far as our President's Report, I'm delighted to introduce our wonderful student. She is Anna Paskowitz, and she's a senior at Palmyra High School, and, which is in Burlington County. Her advisors, Ms. Kelly Jones and Ms. Kim Martino, are they here? Would you like to stand up, please? Thank you. And welcome, Anna. I would like very much to have you share with all of us your comments, and if you come here, there's the microphone ready for you. Thank you very much.
Thank you, President Goldenberg, and good morning, everyone. Today, I want to shine a light on the 2024 NJASC state charity, as well as how fundraising for NJASC's annual charity incorporates the involvement of students across the state. Every year, the NJASC state officers select a charity, typically one from New Jersey, for which member schools from around the state are asked to fundraise during the school year. The selection process begins with open applications from charities that submit information to the NJASC executive member of charities. From the pool of applicants and information provided, the executive member selects three or four charities to give presentations at the NJASC State Officer Meeting in April. After the presentations, the NJASC officers vote on which one is the best choice for the mission of NJASC, as well as the best fit for the students of New Jersey. This is a huge deal. Member schools around the state will raise funds in support of the charity and donate all proceeds to these efforts. At the NJASC Spring Conference at Six Flags Great Adventure in May, the previous year's charity receives a commemorative check, and the total funds raised from that year is announced. In addition to this, the charity for the following year is announced, and representatives from the charity introduce themselves. This past May, NJASC was proud to present the Hugs for Brady Foundation with a check for $76,000, all raised by students across New Jersey. Hugs for Brady's ultimate goal is to end pediatric cancer. The money donated to the foundation goes toward research, blood drives, families, and bringing joy to young cancer patients. In addition to announcing this large fundraising success, the NJASC also announced the 2024 to 2025 state charity, Ava's Voice. Ava Bullis, a 2024 graduate from Shore Regional High School in New Jersey, is the inspiration behind this charity, which is run in part by Ava and her family. When Ava was little, she was diagnosed with Usher syndrome, a rare genetic disease that causes hearing, sight, and sometimes balance to be impaired and potentially disappear later in life. There are approximately 400,000 cases of Usher syndrome worldwide, however, it often goes undiagnosed. Ava's mom knew that there was no cure for Usher syndrome, but she made it her goal for Ava to have as many opportunities as possible before she lost her sight and hearing permanently. She also wanted Ava's voice to be heard, and that's how Ava's Voice was created. Since its founding in 2015, the charity has provided an outlet for communication between childrens and families impacted by this syndrome. It has also spread awareness to people that otherwise would have never known about Usher syndrome. They are a partner in the Usher Syndrome Coalition and affiliate of the National Family Association for Deaf Blind. Because of Ava's roots in New Jersey, she organized and facilitated multiple summer camps for children with Usher syndrome here in New Jersey. These camps provide kids with opportunities not only to seek support through one another, but also experience and see amazing things before they are no longer able to. Thanks to the charity's national and international connections, they were able to take their camps abroad and connect New Jersey with children across the globe. For example, Ava, along with other children with Usher syndrome, were able to see the sunrise at the Grand Canyon. Recently, Ava's Voice partnered with Usher Kids UK and Usher Kids Australia to host summer camps for children with Usher syndrome. The goal is to create memories for the participants, even if their vision, hearing, and balance deteriorates. All funds raised by NJ schools through the NJASC in 2024 to 2025 will only be used in New Jersey camps. That way, schools who raise money for the state charity know they are having a direct impact on kids in schools across the state. Schools across the state raise money for the state charity in numerous ways. There are the typical fundraisers, bake sales, car washes, et cetera. However, schools come up with their own unique ways to raise money for the designated charities as well. Many schools have a spoof on a beauty pageant. For example, Neptune High School in Monmouth County hosts a Mr. Neptune pageant, which raises money through a $5 participation fee and $1 judges bribes, where the audience can bribe judges for whom to crown the winner. Many of these pageants also raise money through audience tickets and food sales, and can raise significant amounts of money for the state charity. It's one great way to involve school spirit with raising money for a great cause. Since 2010, NJASC has raised hundreds of thousands of dollars to support numerous nonprofit charities, whose efforts support children and families in the Garden State. NJASC's past fundraising recipients have included the Hero Campaign, which seeks to prevent drunk driving injuries and deaths by promoting designated driving; Good Grief, which seeks to build resilience and provide support for children and families struggling with loss; Hope Loves Company, which seeks to provide support, resources, and community for children with ALS or who have a family member with ALS; and One Simple Wish, which seeks to support happiness and hope in the lives of children who have been impacted by family crisis and foster care; and Christine's Hope, which seeks to help create a new generation of leaders by teaching kids how to help other kids. NJASC incentivizes and rewards schools' support of the annual state charity by recognizing their funding efforts at its spring conference. At the conference, NJASC awards member schools who have donated the amounts $1,000, $2,000, $5,000, and $10,000 with a plaque. It's a way to motivate students to reach a goal while simultaneously giving them recognition for their hard work. For the 2023 to 2024 school year, Gloucester County Institute of Technology in Gloucester County, Allentown High School in Monmouth County, and Stonebridge Middle School in Upper Freehold Township, Monmouth County, won top awards for raising $10,000 and $5,000 for Hugs for Brady respectively. An additional 35 middle and high schools from around the state raised at least $1,000 for the charity. NJASC is proud of the efforts of student councils from all over New Jersey who donate their time and energy to raise money for the annual charities, using their leadership, creative thinking, and teamwork skills to do so. It is NJASC's hope that this year, we will help Ava's Voice dream, believe, and crush its goal of empowering youth with Usher syndrome and educating families and school communities. Thank you.
That was wonderful. I'm so impressed, and I think what you're doing for New Jersey students affected by Ushers is creating not just memories, but dreams and hopes, and thank you so much for everything that you and the organization are doing. I don't know if anybody else would like to say something. Mary Beth?
I always loved the opportunity to comment. To comment at amazing work that New Jersey Student Councils are doing. I love the idea that you remember how important it is to give back, and that you, by example, by your amazing programs, are having all kids in your student body be thoughtful about whatever the charity is, Hugs for Brady, Ushers, Ava's Voice. Amazing. It's such a great thing, and it brings the school community together. So, I applaud the Student Councils of New Jersey. I applaud you for your work. What day did you start school yet? What day was your first day?
Tomorrow.
Tomorrow's your first day. Well, then that close that. I was going to ask, how was it? It's so exciting to be the beginning of the school year. There's such hope. But I so appreciate you being here, part of our board. I think it's so important for all of us to have that opportunity to hear what's going on in our schools. So, keep up the great work. Your enthusiasm is contagious, and, you know, I'm so glad you're going back and you're spreading that, and all the student councils are. So, this project, great. I can't wait to hear how it goes, but keep thinking about others. I think it's so very important and so well needed. So, thank you. Have a great school year.
Thank you. Commissioner?
Just a quick word. I want to thank you and your fellow students. Giving back to your community is really impressive. I'd never heard of Ushers syndrome, so now, having learned about it, I think that's been effective, and thank you for bringing that to our attention. I'm also looking at my DWE colleagues. These ideas about the pageants might be something that we have to take up. I've got some interesting ideas already, so thank you very much, and I appreciate you coming, and we didn't even get you out of school today, so.
Thank you, Anna. Good luck tomorrow. Very exciting. Okay. Next, I'd like to start with the Policy Committee Report. Elaine, if you are up to it, if not, I can speak for you, but if you would like to, please go ahead. Our committee chairperson is Elaine Bobrov, and I'd like to have her give her committee report. Thank you. You're...
Sorry. Can you hear me?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay. The Board met with the members of the department on August 21, 2024. Among the Board members present was Kathy Goldenberg, ex officia, Mary Beth Berry, Mary Bennett, Jeanette Penner, and Claudine Keenan, as well as myself. Department staff in attendance via teleconference were Kevin Dahmer, Jesse Young, Samantha Price, Jordan Schiff, Kayla Secular, Paula Bloom, Jacini Gordon, Carla Bates, Beth Auerswald, and Stephanie Russo. During the meeting, we discussed Chapter 12, which is inter-district public school choice, and Chapter 30, which was the evaluation of the performance of school districts, QSAC or QSAC, as it's called. The Policy Committee met on August 21 to receive an update on the readoption of Chapter 12, inter-district public school choice, which is on, excuse me, which is on today's agenda at adoption level. The department also presented to the committee about its proposed changes to the instruction and program indicators for the New Jersey Quality Single Accountability Continuum, or New Jersey QSAC. On behalf of the committee, I thank Acting Commissioner Dahmer and his staff for being responsive to the State Board's concerns about the point values for some of the instruction and program indicators, and proposing additional changes. Since we will be discussing both rulemakings later on in the agenda, I will forego the rest of my report.
Thank you, Board Member Bobrov. And next, I'd like to talk about the National Association of School Board Educators. The election for the Chair-elect nationally will take place at the Association State Board of Education Annual Meeting, which will be held Thursday, October 24, 2024. Usually, if we have a board member there, we go and we have a delegate who votes in behalf of the gentleman who's running. There's only one person running this year, and I know that we have also conflicting with the first two days of the meeting, the New Jersey School Board Association Annual Meeting. So, I think in lieu of that, I will not go in person to vote. I will do it by proxy with the permission of the Board for Byron. And I think that it would be beneficial if I could get the Board to go ahead and approve sending about it in behalf of the New Jersey State Board of Education. Let me find, his name is Byron Ernest. He's from Indiana. I've met him many, many times over the year. He's a tremendous, very active gentleman with NASB, and I think he'll be a phenomenal president. I would wholeheartedly vote for him if I were in person, so I'd like to ask the State Board members for the permission to go ahead and put up this particular gentleman as the New Jersey approved person to vote for. Unless the State Board objects, I would like to place New Jersey's votes for Chair-Elect for the Board of Directors, Byron Ernest of Indiana. So, could I please have a motion to do so?
Yes.
Thank you very much, Dr. Butcher. May I please have a second? Thank you very much, Board Member Keenan, Dr. Keenan. All those, is there any more discussion or questions about the gentleman? He's also very funny. He keeps people's attention. All right, all those in favor, please say yes. Yes? Any opposed? Please say negatively, no? Okay, the motion carries. Are there any abstentions for any reason? Someone knows him or doesn't want? Okay, motion approved, so we'll send that notification. Director Shoner, in behalf of the New Jersey State Board. Thank you. And now, we have in front of us our Commissioner's Report and items to go over. Thank you.
Thank you, Madam President. As we do not have any Commissioner Reports this month, we can move right into the agenda items. And the first item for consideration is for appointments, and is a standing agenda item, but we do not have any appointments to move forward this month, so we can move on to Item B on the agenda, which is certification for school districts. Since the August State Board meeting, the Executive County Superintendents have finalized 29 NJQSAC evaluations for districts. I'm recommending 12 of those move forward for certification today. Dr. Jordan Schiff is joined by Carla Bates to address any questions you may have and to share the list of certifications, or I can share it too for Dr. Schiff.
Thank you, Commissioner. Mrs. Bates, if you don't mind reading off the districts that are certified as performing.
Of course. Atlantic County Port Republic School District, Bergen County, the following districts, Demarest School District, Emerson Public School District, Franklin Lakes School District, Mawal Township Public School District, Northern Valley Regional High School District, Pascak Valley Regional High School District, Saddle River School District, Burlington County Sinamensen Township School District, Exex County Verona Public School District, and West Orange School District, and finally, Gloucester County East Greenwich Township School District.
Thank you. I don't believe we have any Board members from these counties, unless I'm mistaken. Tell me, you are? Yeah. Okay. Okay, so you need to... You don't need to recuse yourself. All right. So, do we have any questions at this time?
I would just like to make one comment. We read the 12 districts that scored 80% in all five of the QSAC areas, and we're going to have more conversation later about QSAC, but I think it's important to note that there were 17 that scored below the 80%, and it's a new school year, and it's an exciting time, and I'm hoping this time next year, when we're at a meeting, that we're not looking at, you know, 12 having scored proficient, and 17 that have fallen not quite where we want our children to be at. So, I'm great, new school year, new opportunities, moving forward, but I do think it's important to mention that there is a level of concern that there are that many districts that are not, and it's instructional and programming is the area that seems to be where people are falling short. So, we've got lots of work to do. New year, let's get to it. So, thank you.
You're welcome. Thank you. Okay. So, may I have a motion, please, to approve the 12 districts?
Motion.
Thank you very much, Board Member Peña. May I please have a second? Thank you very much. Any further discussion before we vote? Hearing none. All those in favor to accept the 12 districts for certification of these school districts, please say aye. Aye. Any opposed? Any abstentions? Hearing none. Motion carries. Thank you very much.
Thank you so much. And today, we have more good news. Happy to announce that we have some donations to the Marie H. Katzenbach School for the Deaf. We've received donated funds from two groups. Ms. Valerie Amendalaro donated funds totaling $20,000, and the Ocean County Oral and Maxillofacial Surgery LLC donated funds totaling $500. These funds are to be used for the sole purpose of supporting student activities, such as field trips, yearbooks, and student clubs. Ms. Kathy Ailing is our Assistant Commissioner for the Division of Educational Services and is here to address any questions you might have on these donations.
Thank you. Any questions for Assistant Commissioner Ailing? Hearing none. May I please have a motion to accept the donations as presented? Thank you very much, Board Member Bennett. May I please have a second?
Second.
Thank you very much, Board Member Berry. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstentions? Motion carries. Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Thank you. Moving on to Agenda Item D, which is a resolution to amend the New Jersey State Board of Education public testimony procedures. We're at adoption level. Included in your agenda materials is a resolution to amend the State Board public testimony procedures. President Goldenberg, I'll turn it over to you for discussion with the other Board members.
Thank you so much, and I would like to turn this over to our committee chairperson, our Vice President, Dr. Ned Johnson. Thank you.
Good morning. Thank you. I'd like to present forth our resolution for adoption of amendments to the State Board of Education testimony procedures, public testimony procedures, whereas the New Jersey State Board of Education recognizes its responsibility as the entity authorized to enact statewide policy governing the supervision and control of public education in the state of New Jersey, and whereas within that responsibility, it is the State Board's duty to make its statewide policy enactments, including those pertaining to the rulemaking, subject to comment from the public. And whereas the Administrative Procedures Act requires that the State Board of Education receive public comment on rulemaking during the formal comment period, and whereas in addition to accepting written public comment on rulemaking, the State Board previously established a process for accepting oral public comment on rulemaking from the public, and whereas the State Board also has established a process for scheduling three open topic public testimony opportunities each year, and whereas that policy implementing a process to allow for oral public comment on rulemaking and to schedule separate, open topic public testimony sessions before the State Board of Education was originally adopted on September 2, 1987, and revised on June 6, 2012, and on March 6, 2013. And whereas the State Board has currently deemed it necessary to reconsider its policy for oral public comment on rulemaking and open topic public testimony, now therefore be it resolved, that the members of the New Jersey State Board of Education amend its oral public comment and open topic public testimony procedures policy so that it may now begin an estimated 30 minutes following the conclusion of the regular public business meeting agenda rather than at 2:00 p.m., and be it further resolved that the members of the New Jersey State Board of Education further amend its oral public comment and open topic testimony procedures policy, and remove the previously established two-hour time limit, and be it further resolved that this policy will take effect immediately, beginning with the first public testimony session following the adoption of the resolution.
Thank you. May I please ask for a motion?
So moved.
Thank you very much, Board Member Berry. May I please have a second? Thank you very much, Board Member Shahada. Is there any discussion at this time? Hearing none. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, please signify by saying nay. Any abstentions at this time? The motion carries. Thank you very much, Chairman of this committee. We look forward to this.
Thank you, Madam President.
Thank you. And now, we go to the next topic.
Thank you. We're now on Agenda Item E, which is a resolution to approve appointments to the State Board of Examiners. We're at adoption level for this. Today, I request for your consideration a resolution to reappoint five current members and to appoint six new members to the State Board of Examiners. Dr. Jordan Schiff is joining us with Ms. Ronnie Singh, who will describe the role of the State Board and share the roster of recommended appointments and address any questions you might have.
Thank you, Commissioner. The State Board of Examiners is responsible for the revocation and suspension of educator certificates to ensure student safety and review determinations of appeals and adverse decisions of the Office of Recruitment, Preparation, and Certification regarding certificate eligibility. Pursuant to NJSA 18A:6.34, the Board is comprised of volunteer educators... Pursuant to NJSA 18A:6.34, the Board is comprised of volunteer educators from various areas of the profession, both administration and instruction. The Board members are appointed by the Commissioner with the approval of you, the State Board of Education. Board members have an appointed term of two years. The following individuals are proposed for your consideration for appointment to the State Board of Examiners. Ms. Melissa Pierce, Mr. Derek Jess, Dr. Thelma Ramsey, Ms. Dana Desario-Orlak, Ms. Kristin Ludman, and new appointees, myself, Dr. Jordan Schiff, Dr. Carmella Summershu, Mr. Robert Ford, Mr. Kevin Fitzher, Ms. Michelle McGreevy, and Ms. Gargi Adakari. We present this as an adoption motion.
Thank you. You have time for that. So let me please ask for a motion. Did you say? Thank you. I didn't know if you wanted to comment. Okay, thank you. May I please have a second?
Second.
Thank you, Dr. Johnson. Dr. Butcher?
I've noticed over the years, there tends to be a couple positions that are always vacant. Again, this year, I see there, too. I do have some personal comments about why, but I guess I'll reserve those. They're not very positive towards that particular group. Is there any way to encourage, you know, the presidents have their association, is there any way to speak to them to encourage them to give representation, number one? Barring moving forward with that, what do we have to do to remove that position from the State Board of Examiners as legislation?
Yes, it's in the law. The particular examiners who would be on the Board of Examiners. We do reach out to our stakeholder groups, to all of the professional associations that are represented here, and we're continuing to seek full enrollment of all of the board seats, including the vacant board seats. But this is a very important step for the State Board so that we can move forward with our meetings. We've had difficulties with quorums, so to make sure that we have as many members of the Board of Examiners seated is really important for the work moving forward.
I have no doubt about moving forward with the recommendation. It's just that deeply concerned about the fact that the college presidents aren't participating, particularly given the role of the State Board of Examiners and how it impacts the universities. And I don't know what total number now is, you know, of the, what do we got, 2019 county colleges and how many privates, how many four-year institutions? I can't believe that amongst their associations, they can't get somebody to serve on this.
We'll continue our outreach.
Thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Butcher. Anyone else have any comments at this time? Hearing none. All those in favor of accepting and approving the appointments for the State Board of Examiners as presented to the State Board of Education today, please say aye.
Aye.
Thank you. Any opposed, please say nay. Any extensions? Hearing none. The motion carries. Thank you. Now we go to our next item of business.
Thank you. And we're on Agenda Item F, and today I present at adoption the readoption of amendments of Chapter 12, Inter-District Public School Choice. Dr. Jordan Schiff, who is currently the Assistant Commissioner of the Division of Teaching and Learning and Services, I just want to thank him for serving as interim Assistant Commissioner for Field Services for the last several months and continuing in that role today and joining us, along with Justin Gordon, who is the Director of the Office of Inter-District School Choice. And so here, excuse me, they're joining us here today to present an overview of the rulemaking and to respond to any questions you might have.
Thank you, Commissioner. Good morning again, President Goldenberg, Vice President Johnson, and members of the State Board of Education. Today, we'll be considering a Chapter 12, Inter-District Public School Choice at the adoption level. At the April meeting of the State Board votus to publish the chapter in the New Jersey Register for public comment, we received some, but very few public comment. Today, Director Gordon, who directs the Office of Inter-District School Choice and Non-Publiks, will walk the State Board and the public through some background of it, as well as the proposed changes for your consideration at adoption today. Thank you.
Thank you. I appreciate this opportunity. Next slide, please. Ah, okay, sorry. Didn't realize I had that control. Okay. As you can see on this slide, the mission of the program is to increase educational opportunities for parents and students by providing public school options outside of a student's district of residence and giving parents the power to select a school district or program that best serves their child's individual needs. The Choice Program enables approved choice districts to enroll K-12th grade students who do not reside within their district without cost to their parents. Now we turn to the history of the statute code and code amendments. The Choice Program was originally established by the State Board of Education in 1999 as a five-year pilot. The Inter-District Public School Choice Program Act followed in 2000 and expired in 2005. Rules were adopted in 2000. The rules were readopted in 2004 and 2009. The Inter-District Public School Choice Program Act was then amended in 2010 to expand the program to additional school districts. Rules amended in 2012 were aligned with the revised statute, and the rules were readopted without amendments effective April 2017. Some background on the choice districts that are operating in 2025. As shown on this slide, you can see that the Choice Program is relatively small in terms of participating districts and students. There are 125 operating choice districts with choice students attending them. 5,133 choice students are currently attending those districts. They are located in 19 counties, all but Essex and Middlesex. The current program cost in the state budget is $63.8 million. Due to rapid growth in the number of choice districts from 15 in 2010 to the current level, program growth has been outlined in each annual state budget, resulting in the number of choice districts and enrollment of choice students growing minimally since 2015. This slide shows a, presents a brief overview of the program, which I'll read. The school districts apply to the department to become a choice district. Once they're approved, they publicize their number of seats in advance of the application deadline. Choice districts are allowed to limit their choice programs to a particular grade range or to specialize programs such as STEM, ROTC, or the arts, with reasonable selection criteria, such as interest in the program. The selection criteria has to be identical for resident students as it is for the choice students. Choice district cannot discriminate in its admission policies. Students apply to a choice district, and if they're accepted, they're enrolled in the choice district. Once they're enrolled, they're treated just like resident students until the final grade in the district. They do not need to reapply. Once they're in, they are choice students until they graduate or leave the district. And if there are more applicants than available seats, choice districts hold a blind public library, a blind public lottery. The department is proposing the amendments that are reflected on this slide. We are proposing to streamline language for clarity. We are updating the chapter to account for temporarily unfunded choice students to align with the new law that requires school districts to collect tuition for non-resident students. We are codifying the processes required of choice districts operating the choice program and provide detail on the steps of the student application process. And finally, we are proposing the codification of requirements to the department, for the department to review and approve sending districts seeking to limit their students' participation in a choice program. The appellate division is requiring the department to enumerate the factors that go into the decision of limiting resident students in a choice program. This provides a simplified visual of the enrollment process. The process takes about a year from the time that choice districts publicize their available seats to the point when they're accepted, and then the students actually enroll in the choice program. And this is finally, at the proposal level, the Board unanimously approved the proposal, and this slide provides a regulatory timeline, and we are at adoption level.
And we thank you for your attention, and we're available to answer any questions that you may have.
Thank you. I have a, oh, would you like to go first, Dr. Butcher, please?
Thank you. The bullets that you had listed, thank you, nope, not that one, keep going, that one. Thank you. So the payment of tuition, but these were supposed to be not, could you expand on that a little bit for my knowledge? Thank you.
Sure. Did you want, okay. The Choice Program in the statute, choice districts are not allowed to take parent-paid tuition.
Right.
Therefore, there's a situation in which students who are attending a choice district and move are sort of in no man's land. And so we carved out a category called unfunded choice students that allows those students who have moved in the, during the school year to remain only until the completion of that school year without funding. So we defined unfunded choice as a definition in the code to address the situation where they can't, the school district cannot accept parent-paid tuition, and in order to align with the new law that requires tuition. Thank you.
And Dr. Johnson, you brought this up at one of our last meetings, and you kind of caught that conflict, and it was contemplated in the regulatory changes that we're recommending today.
Thank you so much. Dr. Butcher, sir?
This is a point of interest in looking at the bullet layout on the state, looking at the concentration of where the districts are, et cetera, not for today, but, you know, sometime in the very near future. Could you please provide us with a list of where those schools are by county and what their budget is?
Be happy to do so.
Yeah, just the total, yeah, this district, this county, total budget.
Sure.
And possibly enrollment. Thank you.
Not a problem.
What happens as, if I could ask one other question, what happens when the school has an influx of additional students and they've already committed to this choice program? And so now incoming residential students move in, and suddenly there are less seats available for out-of-district. Do the students in district get sent elsewhere, or how does that work? Because we all have limited seats. So how does that work?
Right. The resident students certainly remain in their, in the district where they reside. And Director Gordon, if you could, wouldn't mind answering the second part of that question about what happens if there is a district that due to local enrollment increases may have less seats available for choice?
Every year, the choice districts determine how many open seats they have. So it's an annual? It's an annual calculation. Right. Thank you. So they post the number of open seats that they have, and so they, and they indicate which grade levels they have openings in. Thank you. Thank you very much. I'm in. Oh, I'm sorry.
Please leave first, please.
As just a follow-up, I have an additional question coming, but what Kathy had said raises a very interesting point. For an example, a biomedical program may have a seat that's opened. That's a four-year program. How does that work, then? Is there going to be any difficulty with the in-school students, someone moves into the district, wants to be part of that biomedical program? There's only 25 seats. If we've offered them to other, you know, to other schools and said that there's choice, are there, how do you factor that all in to choice?
As I mentioned before, the school district determines at the beginning of every, the year before the applications are, or the actual enrollment happens, they determine how many seats they have available, and they will always prioritize their resident students, but they have a pretty good sense of how many openings they have available, and so they'll make those available. And if by chance they are unable to fill all of those seats, or they have too many students, then they'll put the students on wait lists, the choice students on wait lists.
But once the student is accepted into the choice program, they remain in the choice program for the duration of their...
I think that was, I was wondering whether they would be bumped out because someone, okay, that's, thank you for that clarification.
Once they're in, they're in.
Once they're in, they're in.
That's great.
A great point of clarification. And here's where my mind goes on this whole issue. If we went back to the, to the mission statement, increase educational opportunities, nothing more important, and some of the amazing STEM programs and things that are out there that maybe would love to run in a school district and could use the benefit of outside students while they're starting programs, I think is so important. So when I, I look at that mission and I put the parent hat on, you get one chance to get those great opportunities for your students. School choice seems to me, for a parent that and a child that has particular dreams, a great opportunity to avail themselves of opportunities that may be out there that their particular school doesn't have. So we have had great meetings. I always like to take the form of in public just saying, it's been since 2015 since we've added school choice districts. I know it's a legislative piece, but I think it is important to know or to say to the public, you know what, we haven't really added any more schools since 2015, and yes, there are districts, I think Kevin had made the statistics, one in five schools in the area will have the opportunity for choice. But when I'm looking at the numbers, and I'm just looking at the 2024 numbers, I've got to put my glasses on because I can't see them, is the number of choice applicants was 3,595 applicants, of which 1,484 were accepted, and 2,029 are on a wait list. I recognize that this is a legislative issue as well. I just love that the Department of Ed has an opportunity to use their voice to explore further whether, is this a call for we need more choice districts? There are great programs out there. We have extraordinary educators. We have opportunities to maybe grow something even better. So I would just like to take the opportunity to say it's worth investigating whether choice isn't a program we'd like to grow more. So, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Board Member Barry. And sir, you have the floor.
Thank you. I'm just kind of curious to know how the department is going to train and prepare educators for adequate school integration, you know, based on like society?
Speak into the microphone so we can make sure everyone hears you.
Okay. Can you guys hear me better now?
Yes.
So I just want to know about the school integration and how we're going to train and prepare the educators, because, you know, we have kids coming from Princeton going to Newark or vice versa. So we just want to know that, you know, the differences in culture and race and socioeconomic status are going to be taken into account, because I don't, some school districts don't have that population that may want to come to that district. So do we have anything in place for that?
As, okay. As part of the school district application process, when they originally apply to become a choice program, they are required to address that very point and talk about the kinds of programs that they're going to make and support, that they make available. of programs that they're going to make and support, that they make available for the choice students who are not coming from the local community.
Thank you.
Thank you. Any other questions at this time? All right. Hearing none, I think we've had a motion in a second, haven't we? So, all those in favor, sorry, I'm just looking.
No, we didn't have a motion.
We don't have a motion yet.
So, move.
Thank you, sir. May I please have a second?
Okay.
I believe Board Member Pena was next. Thank you. And all those, any other discussion at this time? All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed, please say nay. Any abstentions?
I'm going to abstain.
Thank you. But the motion carries. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you very much. Good explanations.
Thank you, Justin. And Jordan, don't go anywhere. So, we're going to move on to Agenda Item G, the evaluation of the performance of school districts at proposal level. Today, I present at proposal level with readoption, excuse me, the readoption with amendments of Chapter 30, Evaluation of the Performance of School Districts. This chapter establishes a comprehensive single accountability system for monitoring and evaluating school districts called the New Jersey Quality Single Accountability Continuum, or more commonly NJQ SAC. Under NJQ SAC, school districts are evaluated in five key component areas of school district effectiveness: instruction and program, fiscal management, governance, personnel, and operations. The chapter establishes the standards and criteria used to evaluate school districts. Dr. Jordan Schiff is joining us once again, and Mr. Robert Gregory, the Executive Director of the Division of Field Support and Services, are joining us here to walk through additional discussion items and responded questions that you may have.
Thank you again, Commissioner, and good morning once again, members of the State Board. Today, Executive Director Robert Gregory and I will present for proposal several of the department's agency-initiated changes at NJAC 6A:30, referred to as Q SAC hereafter. Today's presentation is inclusive of three agency-initiated changes since second discussion that encompass the continuation of our efforts to harmonize and align our accountability systems while being responsive, while being responsive to stakeholder feedback. The first two agency-initiated changes, we will review our technical updates at Chapters Appendices A and B that update terminology to align to terms used in our state performance report. Additionally, a technical update that clarifies a provision at Governance Indicator 14 based upon feedback heard after second discussion. Finally, an agency-initiated change at Appendix A, which is an alternative point distribution for indicators 1 through 6 that equalize the point values for achievement and progress, indicators in response to feedback expressed by members of the State Board at policy meetings, first and second discussions. It's important to note that while agency-initiated changes at indicators 1 through 6 balance the weights of achievement and progress indicators and graduation rates, the department's efforts to place greater emphasis on growth by assigning more points to progress indicators reflect our responsiveness to public comments received since second discussion and those from members of our State Board of Education. The first technical update applies to Appendix A, Instruction and Program indicators 1 through 7, and Appendices A and B, Governance Indicator 2. The department proposes to update terminology and replace the term subgroup with the term student groups, as illustrated on this slide. This is to align to terminology used on our New Jersey Student Performance Reports. This reflects the department's efforts to use student-centered, access-based language to the extent possible in the rulemaking process. The next technical update is that Governance Indicator 14, which is a requirement for all districts to ensure that students have access to library media services connected to classroom studies in each school building. Currently, NJAC 6A:13-2H is partially cited as the existing indicator. The department proposes to add a sentence that clarifies the rule and include the remainder of 2H to reflect, to reflect the code citation in full, that all school districts shall provide library media services under the direction of a certified school library media specialist, as illustrated on this slide. I will now invite Executive Director Robert Gregory to provide the board with an overview of our final agency-initiated change.
Thank you, Dr. Schiff. Good morning, President Goldenberg, Vice President Johnson, and members of the State Board of Education. As illustrated on this slide, Chart A provides the existing point values at IMP indicators 1 through 6, and Chart B is a summary of the department's proposed amendments at first and second discussion. In short, the department proposed to rebalance points at existing Appendix A IMP indicators 1 through 6, as illustrated on Chart B. This rebalancing involved assigning more points to progress indicators for K through 8 and K through 12 school districts, and the graduation rate indicator for 9 through 12 school districts. Additionally, reducing points at indicator 3, science achievement for K through 8 school districts, and adding points for the same indicator for 9 through 12 districts to reflect the 11th grade NJSLA science assessment, which became operational in 2018. As highlighted on the bottom of Charts A and B, the department's proposed amendments at first and second discussion inverted point values assigned to achievement and progress indicators for K through 8 and K through 12 districts, placing greater weight on progress indicators, and the graduation rate indicator for 9 through 12 districts. The existing point values prioritize achievement over progress. The department's proposals at first and second discussion flipped them and prioritized growth or progress over achievement. This led to some discussion and debate at policy meetings and at first and second discussion with the State Board. After hearing feedback regarding our proposed rebalancing of points at achievement and progress indicators from the State Board, the department considered agency-initiated changes that we are bringing forth for proposal. The changes reflected, or highlighted on Chart C, is the department's revised rebalancing of points that is responsive to State Board and stakeholder feedback, and allows the department to continue to assign more points to growth or progress indicators which receive favorable public comment at second discussion. If I can draw your attention to Chart C on the right, specifically what's highlighted in orange, the department's rebalancing of points is inclusive of our efforts to align accountability systems, place greater emphasis on growth, while ensuring our primary accountability system for evaluating school district effectiveness is equitable regardless of the school district's grade configuration. Our revised proposal balances the point values for achievement and growth indicators for K through 8 and K through 12 school districts, and achievement and graduation rate for our 9 through 12 school districts. The science achievement point value for all school districts represents half the point value of ELA achievement and half the point value of math achievement, which is also responsive to stakeholder feedback received in the rulemaking progress, process. I'm going to advance to the next slide, which highlights the existing point values at IMP indicators and the department's revised proposals that we feel are responsive to both feedback from the public and State Board. If I can draw the board's attention to Chart A on this slide, which shows us our existing point values, and Chart C, which reflects our revised proposal. As you can see, ELA and math achievement on Chart C remains the same for K through 8 school districts. It decreases by half a point in K through 12 districts, and by five points in 9 through 12 districts. Science achievement decreases by five points for K through 8 districts, one and a half points for K through 12 districts, and it increases by five for those 9 through 12 districts, as previously discussed. ELA and math progress or growth increases by 2.5 points for K through 8 districts, and one and a quarter points for K through 12 districts. And finally, our graduation rate increases by five points for 9 through 12 school districts. At the bottom of the chart, Chart C, you'll find the balancing of point values for achievement and progress indicators for K through 8 and K through 12 districts, and achievement and graduation rate indicators for 9 through 12 districts. The next several slides help illustrate our proposed amendments to Appendix A in the rulemaking process. Let's start with our K through 8 school districts, of which there are 274 that undergo comprehensive NJQ SAC review. Please note, the pie chart on the far left of the next several slides will highlight our existing point values. ELA and math group, if you look at the first chart, is 30%, and it's weighted at 50% for achievement. In essence, as it currently stands, achievement is half the point value assigned to K through 8 districts. The second pie chart shows the inverted weights for achievement and growth indicators presented at first and second discussion, where now, growth represented 50%, and achievement represented 33%. And finally, our revised proposal for growth and achievement reflects equal weights for both at 42%. I also just want to highlight that this still represents a nine percentage point increase for growth or progress indicators, as growth remains one of the priorities for the department, but now, we've really been able to balance things based on feedback from members of our State Board. We see the same for our K through 12 districts, of which there are 236 that undergo comprehensive Q SAC review. On this slide, the blue represents achievement, the yellow represents growth. If you look to the far left, existing achievement is at 33%, growth at 25%. The second chart shows the inverted weights for achievement and growth. Those are reflected in blue and yellow. And the final chart, or the third chart to the far right, shows the balancing of weights for both indicators, which now is at 29%. Finally, our 9 through 12 districts, of which there are 51, currently, achievement is at 50%, grad rate at 33%. The inversion is reflected on the second chart in blue and green, where grad rate is at 50, and achievement is at 33. And finally, the balance reflected on the third chart, which is the department's proposal in blue and green, where graduation and achievement are at the same weights, which is 42%. The department received public comment from 18 commenters since second discussion. Those comments and the department's responses are captured in our summary memo. We would like to thank all of our commenters and the State Board for feedback we've received throughout this process. The department remains committed to ensuring we incorporate feedback where possible, and we urge all stakeholders to unite in our efforts to improve the quality of public education for all students in the state of New Jersey, so their dreams can become reality, and they flourish in 21st century America and in our global economy. Thank you for your attention this morning. Dr. Schiff and I will now take any questions you may have.
Board members, any questions or comments? Dr. Butcher?
I understand, first of all, I appreciate the fact that you've made those moves towards the progress side of it, and I'll vote in favor of moving this forward today, but to put you on alert, I find it interesting and kind of disturbing that we're putting science in a different category than math and ELA, particularly in the society we're living in today and what's going on around us. You know, we fought long and hard to get science added to the core curriculum content standards, and I personally believe it should be right up there equal to those other two categories. Here, you know, if you look, I'm on page seven in the charts. I don't know what slide it is, it's one that's labeled seven at the bottom.
There it is.
Yeah. If you look at science achievement, you know, you've got indicators less in the science area than the other two, and it's totally missed in the achievement, or excuse me, in the progress part. I really think we ought to take a second look at elevating the importance of science in both of those categories. And just taking like 10 seconds to write two things down, you know, we look at topics that are being discussed globally right now and politically, particularly in the United States, climate change and medicine. Are those math? Are they English language arts? I would propose to you that they are, but they're also significantly based upon science. I really think we need to take a closer look at how much credence we're giving to how we prepare students to be ready for the world of science.
I appreciate that comment. I would also just draw the board's attention to our 9 through 12 group, where science, there wasn't a point value associated with science. We are now including it for the first time here for our high school students. One of the concerns that was discussed and debated as we were doing this is that we had to rebalance. It all has to add up to a particular number in order to do it. So, if we take from one, we have to pull from another. And I do appreciate the concern about the importance of science, and we're going to be moving forward in the relative, relative near future with new science standards as the 2020 standards come to expire. So, we take that very seriously. Also, in ELA and mathematics, they're tested every year in grades 3 through 8, where science is not. It's just tested once in the elementary timeframe, once in middle, and once in high school. So, I appreciate those comments, Dr. Butcher.
Dr. Butcher, if I can also add, the science achievement is not a part of our ESSA state plan, but it is a part of Q SAC. That was a very deliberate decision made during the previous adoption of the code in 2017 to overemphasize the point that you just raised, sir.
If I could just add a couple more points, and I appreciate you raising this, because this is something we've discussed, I think, at length, primarily in our policy committee, but I don't think we've done as much discussion in the public. So, two major components for the science, because of the frequency of assessment, that's kind of reflected here. This was in the, in the comments that Dr. Gregory pointed out, this was a common refrain in those. Because science is not offered as many times, that to hold it at the same, same point value was inconsistent in terms of with ELA and math. The other piece for progress, having that data for every year between grades 3 and 8 allows us to create those progress indicators. For science, it's given in grade 5 and 8, so it's not year, you can't do that same year to year. It's a different cohort that takes the assessment each year, which doesn't lend itself to the same progress measure that we have in ELA and math. So, this is, these points... So this is the, these point values not only reflect, I think, the feedback that we received from the commenters, the public, and through our policy meetings, but also just the, the practical consideration of the frequency at which science assessments are proper.
And if I could just, in, in that regard, my comments were back, or approach to the real issue here, which is it, it isn't taught that much. It isn't so frequent.
Tested.
In, in the science there, and to me, is the real problem. Because if it were, it would be, you know, we could, we could assess what we're teaching. We could look at point systems based upon what we're teaching, but we're not teaching it as much, and I think that's part of where the problem is. I, I believe in today's age, we need to take a different look at what we're teaching our children. I think science is critically important, at all, at all grade levels, by the way. I have, I have a kindergartner, granddaughter, who started school last week, and she's already taking biology. She's studying butterflies, but.
It's disgusting.
It's great.
Thank you. Please, Jeanette Pena. Mary Beth, you'll be next.
So I don't disagree with you, Dr. Butcher, and there were, there was a very robust debate regarding the Q Sac process, but I think that that refers more to, your, your comments refer more to what happens before Q Sac. And we really wanted to focus on how we were going to measure a school district's progress and how they were meeting the expectations. So I just want to thank everyone. I want to thank President Goldenberg. I almost called you Dr. Goldenberg. Sorry. So I want to thank her for her leadership, because this was a very long process, and sometimes I almost felt bad. I said, wow, I'm not letting this go. But it really, you know, I think it was very productive. I'm grateful to have worked with all of you and, and Mr. Damer as well. This was a very good process, and I'm pleased. I do think that this is something that will let children know, we do think you can do it. We're going to help you along the way, obviously, but we do think you're capable of that and even more so. So thank you so much.
Thank you.
Thank you, Board Member Pena. And Mary Beth Berry.
Yes, thank you. And I'd like to echo that sentiment. We had great conversation, lots of conversation. So I, I believe compromise is really important. I think there is a great deal of compromise that came into this process. My, my question is, in the beginning, the technical updates you alluded to, the, the change from subgroup to student group, can you expand upon that a little bit more?
Yeah. So as we presented at the last board meeting, throughout the rulemaking process, we've really been trying to align our accountability systems, and we presented to you the difference between our ESSA state plan, Q Sac, and our school performance reports. Currently, in our school performance reports, we use the terminology student group. And so again, we just wanted to align more our accountability systems and use the same terminology in Q Sac.
So is there any kind of like metric, is there, these are the delineated student groups, or?
Yeah. It's in our federal accountability system. So when, when we report out on state assessment results, when I come to you at the middle of the year, and we review all of those charts, those are based upon all of the student groups. So race, ethnicity, special needs status of students, multilingual learners, and economically disadvantaged are all of those student groups that we, we have.
And, and that would weigh in because, of course, now we're looking at accountability, and we're looking at where these groups are. So all of that has been factored in to make sure that each group is represented and, and how groups are, are groups double counted. That's all something that you've looked at and making sure that all of the data works. You guys are good at that.
Well, yes, but to, to be specific about it, the way that we calculate the, what percentage of the maximum points are allowable is we look at total students, and then we average all of the subgroups that are available that have 20 or more students within them, and we average those together. What that does is to ensure that those student groups, which may be relatively small, are still an area of focus for all districts as we, as we go on. So remember when we looked at those charts and we saw those significant achievement gaps between particular subgroups?
Right.
They can be masked because they're relatively small. This calculation makes sure that they're not masked, and it aligns to how we do the work in ESSA as well.
Thank you. Any other comments or questions? Hearing none. I'd like to please ask for a motion to accept the evaluation and performance of school districts as presented. And thank you very much, Board Member Pena. May I please have a second? Thank you very much, Board Member Bennett. Hearing no other questions, comments. All those in favor, please say aye. Aye. Any opposed? Please say nay. Any abstentions at this time? Please voice them. The motion carries. Thank you so much. And I would like to thank the committee for being so avid and involved and dedicated in discussion that emanated and flowed, and I would like to very much thank the DOE for listening, discussing, and talking about it. Thank you all.
Thank you.
Thank you. And now, is there any new business to discuss at this time? Hearing none. I'd like to wish everyone a great beginning of school year, for those who have children involved, and for all of us involved in education. So may I please ask for a motion to adjourn?
So moved.
Thank you. I believe Mary Bennett was first, and Mary Beth, may I please have a second?
I would love to second that.
Thank you. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
I'm, I guess if you want to say nay or abstain, but the motion carries. Thank you all. Have a great year.
Public testimony starts when?
Thank you.
Hi.